Oh. Let me upload the red line more than that for you. So.
I saw the red line.
So.
Yeah.
According to that, that's but this is the final version.
Okay.
And this is for adding to the existing work.
Couldn't find me.
On the, on the, uh, the cops here. Each other in surplus.
Did you send it in?
The question.
Uh, it sounds completely happened. What you're saying, that that happened.
I can't remember if that was on.
But then you'll go into check it next week and mail before cops.
It's a bit. Case wise.
Sorry.
Oh, so we sent this, you know. Actually, I haven't opened up my emails since Monday. Oh, really?
Still a little left out here. You voted, Craig voted.
Well, I technically voted two and a half weeks ago, but I turned in my daughters today.
I can't vote.
You can't.
There's nothing to vote for.
Not have my sticker?
Unincorporated CD fours on like.
Well, we could, we could incorporate you. Where do you want to be?
No, I'm fine unincorporating.
Yeah, I turned my ass morning. I just, I just couldn't.
You realize that we spent thirty-two cents, so you could put that in the mail bill?
Well, but we only spend it if we send it.
Oh, okay.
That's, I asked Brian because, when, once he told me that, I'm like, yeah, then I'm definitely not putting it in now. I'll save the money. Yeah, so I just went up there and Mary Asherson's upstairs. I know, he's a poll worker. And his wife.
How fiscally conservative am I? I won't take your thirty-two cents of gas dollars to mail in my ballot. I'll spend my dollar fifty in gas.
In gas. Yeah, since I'm already here.
Details, details.
Details, yeah. Details, details. What's the details? All right, so we're ready to start on this one, I guess.
Board of adjustments, I'm trying to pull it up. That's right.
Pull that one up.
Let me check my clock.
Did he email it to us?
Okay, go ahead and push the buttons.
I, I can't find the.
Board of equalization?
Yeah.
I never go off email, I just go off the. Okay, you ready over there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Morning. Welcome to our, we're gonna start with our Board of Equalizations, uh, meeting. We have six items on the agenda, and as I was reading through the notes, item number two was to strike. Is that still consistent?
Yeah, that's correct. Uh, there is, it's, um, hearing number, sorry, let me get that in front of me.
Well, if we're striking it, we don't need the hearing number?
Well, no, we're not striking the agenda, we're striking a hearing within the agenda.
Okay.
It's a hearing number three forty-one in the report, which is, I believe is on pages, uh, like seven and eight of the report. For Harvey, uh, for God's office, by the way, for the record.
All right, let me get there. I always forget to do that.
Yes, it's on pages, um. Oh, for crying out loud, gotta take the alligator clip off. It's on pages, uh, four, at the bottom of page four, all of page five, and the top of page six, that hearing encompassed, uh, just needs to be struck from that report. Uh, there was an error in the, when it was finalized, that we didn't catch before we printed the report, so the item number three is that correction.
Let's just pull that one, and then we'll, we'll address it when we get to it, on that one. I, I read it as, as strike the whole thing.
No, it's just striking that.
I'm trying to speed read through stuff.
Hearing, sorry.
All right, so we have, we have the six, uh, agenda items on there. The first one is to approve the Board of Equalization Assessors approved review process report. That's always kind of a stumbling. Isn't the first one to approve minutes?
Nope.
So you modified this from your email?
What was that?
That's why you don't go from the email you sent me.
Or either that or I'm looking at the wrong email.
I'd be looking at the wrong email. I only sent one email this week.
When did you send it?
It did, it did come from BOE though. I've started to, we're gonna start using that email address to keep everything consistent, so that it's not bouncing between people in my department.
Okay. That's all right. I'll just second them all.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll move that we approve, uh, regular agenda item number one as stated.
Second. Okay, I got a motion and a second to approve item, agenda item number one as stated. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero. Now let's move to number, uh, agenda item number two. And, and it appears like there's just one item that we need to strike from that, and that's hearing three four one dash two zero one seven.
Make sure I got that right. You have to excuse my dyslexia sometimes, I mix up. We'll make sure I got it right. Yes, three four one, not three fourteen, but three four one.
Okay. Any other discussions on, on these items?
Nope.
Move that we appro, approve the Board of Equalization Hearing Process Report, striking hearing number three four one dash two zero one seven.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the Board of Equalization Hearing Report as stated with the, uh, striking of the one item. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero. Okay, next we have the Board of Equalizations Hearing Process Report. Any questions on that one? Motion.
I'll move that we approve the Board of Equalization Hearing Process Report as stated in regular agenda item number three.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the Board of Equalization Hearing Process Report. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Okay. Number four is to approve or deny a petition to the Board of Equalizations for a hearing, uh, to hear appeal of property values. My only question on this one is that the application is not filled out on the documentation?
Uh, the, no, the application was filled out. I, I think I only included just the late petition. Are you, did I include more than that, or? I'm sorry, I don't have the display in front of me.
I've got two documents.
Okay.
I've got the rules and guidelines document, and then I have a late petition.
Yes.
And the late petition is blank.
Really?
Yes.
Okay.
The late petition for Mary Ellen Curtis.
I apologize. That, it was electronically filled out one, maybe when I uploaded it, it blanked it out. Cause I, I, I've got it printed off here, if, um. Uh, well, I mean, I can summarize, or if you'd like to, or if you'd like to hold this one for another week until I can get you the, the correct document.
I would prefer doing that.
That's fine by me. Go ahead.
Motion to continue?
Four one.
For one week?
For one week.
One week, okay. Second.
Got a motion and a second to continue agenda item number four for one week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Okay. Continue. Agenda item number five is to approve or deny a petition to the Board of Equalization for a hearing appeal of the property value, and as I read down through it, um, it looks like they gave evidence of trying to email multiple times. I saw all the.
Yeah.
All the fu, uh, screenshots and everything with it. Any, any discussion on that?
Nope.
Okay.
I'll move that we approve the petition to the Board of Equalization as stated in regular agenda item number five.
Second. Got a motion and a second to approve the petition as stated in number five. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero. And number six is to, uh, to deny or approve a petition, Board of Equalizations, again, for hearing appeal. And if you can kind of walk us through this in just a little bit. Do you recommend a denial, so?
We're recommending, uh, the auditor's office recommending denial. I don't know if maybe, uh, attorney's office has a different opinion, but based on the circumstances, it's kind of like. I mean, I, I checked the notices. The notice actually originally went to the, uh, original owner, uh, because the document that changed ownership was recorded after the printing date of the valuation notice. Uh, we sent out the notice to the recorded owner at the time. Uh, the notice was not returned to us, uh, and then the tax notice was then sent to the new ownership, which, uh, according to the owner's email, is still a wrong address, but that ad, address is what was listed on the warranty deed, so, you know, we sent out the, the note, we sent out both the tax notice and the valuation notice to the, uh, owner of record at the recorded address at the time, which, uh, according to the guidelines is essentially correct, and that does not give them a basis for, uh, being granted a late appeal, so that's why we're recommending denial on this one.
Okay. All, would you? Sounds like there's an exception in there, potentially.
Well, the standards of practice specifically states that if a property owner claims, never having received notice, that they should not be granted, um, a hearing if the county's records show that the notice, that the notice was sent to the last known address. And I think those are the facts that we have, is that we sent the notice to the last known address. Of course, the only way I think in this situation that, that the, that the board here can, uh, get to a hearing is if you find some sort of extraordinary or unanticipated circumstances.
So, here's my question. If we sent the notice, how did they eventually then file notice that they said we didn't notice them if we have the same address and that's what we've been using?
Didn't it like go to an LLC or something?
Yeah, it went to, so the, the property was, was bought from a, a, a private owner, well, a, a named owner to, by an LLC, and that's how they hold the ownership of, of the property. Uh, and the address recorded on the warranty deeds address was the LLC's address in, I guess like Riverdale or something like that. And I assume that's probably where they got the tax notice from, but they are actually occupying the property, uh, in Provo, so, um, I'm guessing maybe they just didn't pick up the mail for a little while after they got the tax notice. Uh, in our case though, you know, it's not a case of where we, we, we sent the notice to the wrong address because of any kind of internal issue or, or error. We sent the notice to the recorded address at the time, and, and, you know, when we print these notices, it is a, is a snapshot of the moment, so anything that happens after we, when we print the valuation notices, you know, doesn't, it doesn't, it won't get take, it won't take effect until the tax notices are sent out, so.
To me, the exception would be if, after the recording, we reissued that, then they immediately came in within, let's say, thirty days, or whatever the normal.
Right.
I, I could get there. That's why I say I'm still wondering how they.
Well, in this case, you know, we do have a process where we, where we resend out a notice if we're notified.
Right.
Of, of an address change, but in this case, the notice never came back. So it wasn't, it wasn't sent back as undeliverable, so we really didn't have any notification in both cases, both tax notice and valuation notice, that the address was incorrect.
Right. Okay. So for me, always with these, huh, is, is that we have a process, and if we start to waiver from that process, then how far do we go?
Right.
Okay. I'll move that we deny the application as stated in number six.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to deny the application as stated in number six. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Got a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're adjourned. Now we'll move into our Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. Welcome, oh, uh, yes, we gotta wait for the, for the button pusher. I shouldn't say that, right? That's probably. For the change of recording. Okay, we are, we're ready now. Now we're in a Board of Commissioners meeting this morning. It's good to have you here. Uh, this is election day, and I'd like to give Brian maybe an opportunity to, to, tell us about election day, how, maybe how it's going, or anything that he'd like.
Well, as a reminder, uh, today, uh, is not only our municipal elections, but also, uh, the general election for the third congressional, um, vacancy that, uh, will elect someone to fulfill the balance of the term of, uh, retiring Congressman Chaffetz. As always, it's important for people to come out. We get really big turnout during the presidential, and lower turnout, disappointingly so, for these municipals, but they're actually just as important, if not more so. So we encourage people. This, uh, has been an all by mail election this cycle, and anyone that didn't get a ballot is entitled to come to one of our vote service centers at any one of the cities, or here at the county building today before eight o'clock tonight, or if they, uh, just haven't got their ballot in the mail, then they should bring it in to one of those vote service centers and just go straight to the front of the line and drop it in the orange box, but we encourage people to, uh, take the opportunity to participate and have a say in their, uh, who their elected officials are today. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So, um, with that, we will always start with a prayer, reading our thought, and the pledge of allegiance, and looking to the audience to see if anybody is willing to, to volunteer to participate with us in either one of those two. Are there any, any volunteers to? Do one of those. Prayer? Anybody for the pledge? Okay, nice. Thank you.
Robert Moore. Artisan, Father, we are thankful for this, uh, day. We're grateful that we could be, uh, citizens of this great country that, which we live, grateful for this community which we live as well, and for the kindness of the people herein. We pray that thou would bless us this day, that we might, uh, have good thoughts as to, um, the proper role of government. We pray that thou would bless, um, all those who participate in this meeting this day. Pray that thou will bless, uh, our, our great country on this, uh, election day, that, uh, good people will be chosen. We pray that thou will bless all those that, uh, that serve, um, in various capacities, whether first responders or, or through other ways to help, uh, lighten the load of people. We ask that thou would bless them for their kindness and for their goodness, and their willingness to serve. I ask that thou bless our military, um, who keep us safe and free. And, uh, we are thankful again for our blessings, and we're thankful for the, um, everything thou has given to us, and we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Please repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thanks for participating with us on that. Uh, we have, on our agenda, fifteen items on consent. And from the consent, um. If we could pull off number two, just for, uh, question of clarification. And number. Let's see. I know there was a little confusion on twelve. Do we need to pull number twelve off for? On just the?
My question was answered with the new document.
Oh, okay. All right, and?
I would like fifteen held, or unless we just wanna stipulate, I'd like to do what you've done a couple times and pull one of these items off, or at least show my nonapproval for denial because of lack of process on it.
Okay, well, let's hold that. Um, so we're, we're okay, so I've got number two and number fifteen.
Which we.
Okay. And then, uh, moving to regular agenda item number one, excuse, then to, to the rest, to the regular agenda, everything will go on consent except for which we will pull off for discussion. Uh, I would like to just kind of explain number two, what happened there. And then number six was to strike. We'll leave that on consent for strike. That's all I have.
So we're only discussing two, right?
Two. All right. Any comments on those that we've put on consent? That, on items that we put on consent?
No.
Okay, just, so we'll have the public comment at the end, yeah, okay. All right, number, number two, um, this is to ratify a signature, but as I look down through the documentation, on page nineteen, there's no signature on page nineteen. I'm not sure exactly why there's that page on there with no signature. I know I signed the other one. I recognize who signed that one, the one above, but there's, nineteen has no signature, and so I'm wondering why there's blank pages in between with a signature at, on page nineteen. There are no signature on nineteen.
Pat Bird with, uh, Department of Drug and Alcohol. That's interesting, because that was not the way it was.
The loading issue?
Yeah.
I just saw that. I thought, I'm not sure what's going on.
The landlords had signed it, um, and then we had, uh, put those together, but it looks like we've added pages. I can correct that.
So nineteen should just be, we could cross through that one?
Correct. Page nineteen, is that what you're looking at?
Page nineteen. So I see the signatures on, let's see, let me get down to it, sorry. Page fourteen has the signature on there.
Maybe a question, just a thought on that. Is that because page nineteen is the signature from the Gordons, and Commissioner Lee's signature wouldn't need to be duplicated, cause he signed on the earlier document on page fourteen? Is that?
I don't know.
I'm just wondering if that.
It may be.
Does that kind of make sense to where?
Cause there are, it does make sense.
Where, you know, they've just, you've printed one page to take down to have them sign. We have the page that he's signing, so as long as all three of them are combined in the packet, we're okay.
Is that what it is?
That's what it is, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so we can, we can just take that one signature line off. I just, anytime I see blank pages above a signature, it makes me nervous, unless we say unintentionally, intentionally left blank.
I was intentional.
You're paying attention, right?
Yeah, right. You're just checking me all the time. Okay, thank you. All right, then, uh, a motion would be in order.
Move that we ratify the signature stated in item number two.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to ratify the signature stated in item number two. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero.
On fifteen, um. I register either fourteen sixty-nine, or do you want a specific check number that I object to? Brian, what's easiest? We've done this before, I just can't remember how we've done it.
Give me a raise.
Fourteen sixty-nine. And it's not that it's not ultimately a va, valid expense, it just is not in accordance with our policies and procedures, and the auditor flagged it because it's not in the travel and didn't go through the proper approval, and so I think we need to go back through, submit it through the travel, not the PO agenda. That's why. It's not that it's not, no funds were used inappropriately, but our policy wasn't followed on this. The auditor flagged it, and then I've flagged it thirteen hundred different times, so, um, I'm only gonna move forward on this register if we exclude that portion for myself, but it's still sitting in the system with two approvals and a denial. So.
Okay. All we get on here is a line on the registry.
Mm-hmm. It's specifically that check number right there.
Yeah, which I can't pull up to see what that, what that is.
If you'd like, Mr. Chairman, uh, we can just go ahead, as Commissioner Graves has suggested, just pull it off this register. We'll get the detail for all three of you for next week, and.
That, that's fair enough.
Okay.
Like I say, we could do it, it's only one check in that register, if we wanted to just exclude the one check.
Yeah, that's what I just suggested. Yeah, just exclude that check.
So that check number is two, three, one, nine, five, nine?
And then we'll just go ahead and get you the detail as to what's involved with that check, so it can appear next week.
And again, the funds weren't, they're just not gone through our right process. It's my only reason. So then I would then make a motion that we ratify the warrant registry, uh, excluding check number two, three, one, nine, five, nine out of the registered number fourteen sixty-nine for approval.
On second?
Got a motion and a second to, uh, uh. Ratify the warrant registry summary as, as stated with the exclusion that has also been mentioned. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Okay. Okay, on number two from our regular agenda, what, what happened last, um, you probably, if, if you're.
You're one of our five regular watchers.
Yeah, if you're watching and you're. Yeah, if you're watching, and you see that we, that we set a, uh, a date, time, and location for a public hearing, we're not trying to confuse people on this. Uh, we're just trying to clarify and, and get all of us on the same page. So what happens is, is that the tax notices go out with the date that's printed, and the date that was printed, already printed, was December fifth. We moved that to December ninth last week, now we're, or twelfth, and so now we're adjusting it back to be in line with what has been printed and sent out to the general, uh, uh, public. And so, just to be in, in line with, with that, and having, just in case, we don't want somebody to come on the, on the twelfth and say, well, you said it was on the twelfth, and it's printed on the fifth, and anyway.
There's a good chance they'll still be able to be heard on that issue.
Yeah.
And of course, historically speaking.
This is just kind of pulling it back into line with what.
With our law.
With our, with our law, and with the, with the, uh, the printed notice.
With the idea that come the fifth, when you have the hearing, if you need to continue it to the twelfth, you can do so.
So, that's, that's why this is on here, just not to confuse from last week. So if we could get a motion.
I move that we set a date, time, and location for a public hearing to discuss the twenty eighteen budget for the general fund and other budgetary funds of Utah County for Tuesday, December fifth, at nine AM in this room, fourteen hundred of the county administration building at one hundred East Center Street, Provo, Utah, uh, canceling the previously discussed twenty eighteen budget for, set for December twelfth.
Second?
I got a motion and a second, uh, to set that date, time, location for that public he, hearing for December fifth. Um, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. That was, we struck that one. I think that's, okay, that's it for the, uh, the agenda items. Now, we look at our, our closed meetings. We need a number eleven, number thirteen, and number fourteen is what I have.
Motion to strike number twelve from the agenda?
Second?
Got a motion and a second to strike number twelve from the agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero.
Move that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss the purchase, exchange, or lease of real property, water rights, or water shares for today's date at this location following completion of regular agenda items.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve and set a date, time, and location as stated in number eleven. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero.
Move that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting to discuss the character of professional competence or physical or mental health of an individual or individuals for today's date at this location following completion of regular agenda items.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve and set a date, time, and location, uh, for a strategy session, uh, no, 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 it's not a strategy session, to discuss the character of professional competence as stated in number thirteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero.
Move that we approve and set a date, time, and location for a closed meeting for a strategy session to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation for today's date at this location following completion of regular agenda items.
Second?
Got a motion and a second to approve, to approve and set a date, time, and location as stated in number fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. I, I have no work session, uh, items, public comment. Now's the time, Robert.
My name is Robert Stevens. I'm from Provo. Um, I hate to be the only person up here every week, but there's just things to talk about. Um, you know, um, the, the Lord has said, thou shall not steal, and taxation is theft. And so, you know, we must handle it in discretion. So, uh, when it comes to the concept of, of, of a person not submitting their taxes and so forth, uh, before we had mail, we had individuals who would go directly, uh, to a person, um, and tax them. But, you know, um, has mail ever been stolen? Has mail ever been lost? Uh, uh, who's ever been seriously sick for an extended, uh, uh, period of time where they weren't able to get their mail? So now that we're in the twenty-first century, what can we do? Um, I, I don't know too much about that workday software, but I would think they added features in it for this where you could email. You know, as a citizen, it'd be nice if I could sign up and say, you know what, I really don't wanna lose my, a property over a notice of taxation. So, um, is there a way I could sign up to be emailed, or texted, or phoned? Is there somebody who, um, who if, who if you don't hear from me, is there someone I, I could sign up and say, and you can notify them in my behalf? Uh, that's all I have to say on that matter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, any other, any other public comments? All right, we will, we'll move into our, our closed meetings. Thank you for being here today.
Don, how can we put, how can we put, Don, how can we put new dirt in it right before it's supposed to snow? Why do we put new dirt before it's supposed to snow?